Okay, welcome back. We're on to nine point four. Good afternoon, Mr. Visbalco.
Good afternoon. Corporate Services has four tax cancellation requests on five properties. The very first one meets the policy for cancellation. The other four do not, so they've been lifted, listed individually. The very first one is request for tax penalty cancellation roll sixty-one oh six oh four three zero three four. The MD policy number one zero one one, policy tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payment cancellation requests in the MD. When administration receives property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories: requests meeting the criteria of policy one dot zero one one and requests not meeting the criteria of policy one, uh, one dot zero one one. A property tax cancellation request was submitted by a property owner for one property. A review of the request concludes it does meet the MD policy one dot zero one one. The request was received, uh, the request received was summarized or is summarized in Appendix A. Uh, the property tax penalty cancellation, MD policy number one dot zero one one and penalty cancellation administrative process flow charts are attached as Appendix B. Appendix C includes the request and the tax notices of the property. This request was originally presented in June and it was listed as not meeting the policy. Upon further review, we, uh, we, we made an error in that original, um, request. That's why it's before council today as we are, uh, are representing this with the correction. Administration recommends that council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents for roll number sixty-one oh six oh four three zero three four. Council options: one, that council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents for roll number sixty-one oh six oh four three zero three four. Number two, that council denies the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents for roll number sixty-one oh six oh four three zero three four. Or three, that council directs administration to bring back additional information on the penalty tax cancellation request to a future, uh, meeting of council.
Thank you. Thinking for a motion?
I'll make a motion for option one.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Slupchak, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents for roll number sixty-one oh six oh four thirty thirty-four. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Okay, carried. On to nine four two.
Request for penalty, uh, tax penalty cancellation on roll sixty-two oh two oh two one zero zero three. The MD policy number one zero one one, property tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payment cancellation requests in the MD. When administration receives property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories: requests meeting the criteria for policy one zero one one and requests not meeting the criteria for policy one zero one one. A property tax cancellation request was submitted by a property owner for one property. A review of the request concludes it does not meet MD policy numbers, uh, number one dot zero one one. The, uh, the request received is summarized, uh, received is summarized in Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation policy and the penalty cancellation administrative process flow charts are attached in Appendix B, and Appendix C includes the request and the tax notice of the properties. Administration recommended action: that council denies the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of four hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents for roll number sixty-two oh two oh two one zero zero three. Council options: number one, that council denies the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of four hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents for roll number sixty-two oh two oh two one zero zero three. Option two, that council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of four hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents and 2022 tax levy penalty of three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents for roll number sixty-two oh two oh two one zero zero three. Option three, that council directs administration to bring back additional information on the tax penalty cancellation request to a future council meeting.
Thank you. Making a motion?
Well, um, I just want to get this clear. So the guy had to, he was making auto payments and then he had a credit for some reason, then you stopped taking auto payments out?
Good question.
Uh, yes. So on this one. So the, the process of auto payments is that at the beginning of, uh, the year, for the, for the first payment in January, the very first thing we have to do is take a look to see if anyone already has credits, because if they have credits already, there's no requirement to, uh, uh, withdraw money out of their bank account. So in this case, uh, as it's detailed here, what we found was that, um, at a certain point in time, we need to review which ones we've taken off of auto pay because they had a credit, and in this case, they paid an additional, uh, a payment, and flag them back on at a later date when we do our review. This is the first time this scenario has ever happened where someone who's on auto pay actually decided to pay their taxes in full. So many times what happens is, or every time that what happens is, the, uh, if it's paid in full, they're removed off of auto pay, they receive the tax notice, and it doesn't say that they're on auto pay anymore. Um, so they're, they're now made aware that they're not on auto pay. When people are on auto pay, they receive the tax notice, and it actually says on there, no payment is required right now, your next payment is on or about, uh, this amount. So in this case, this is something that we see administratively, we're going to tweak to ensure that we can put them back on auto pay without a request.
Yeah, it does. And I mean, it, it answers my question for what motion I'll make, and it's number two, that will approve the request to council, because I'd be in the same boat. I, if I'm auto paying, I would just expect it to be auto pay from here on out, so. So I'll make that motion, number two.
So you're going with, uh, number two?
Yeah, to approve their requests to cancel. So, and then on secondly, are you, is this something that you flag now to, to, to look after, or does it have to apply again for auto pay, or?
Yeah, it's just a subtle additional step, but what we're going to do is the, the properties that had a credit, therefore not requiring, um, any more auto pay, what we're going to do is make sure that we take those, those individual roll numbers and move them into the next review, uh, file. Um, so it's January or July.
It's probably a pretty unique one, too. Like, it doesn't happen very often.
Correct. When we looked at this administratively, the very first question was, have we had this before? And the answer was no. So.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Scarsen on behalf of council. The council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of four hundred and sixteen thirty-three and the 2022 tax levy penalty of three hundred and eighty-eight fifty-seven for the roll number six twenty twenty twenty-one double zero three. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote then. Carrie, on to nine four three.
This is a request for tax penalty cancellation roll sixty-two oh three oh five four zero zero two. The MD policy number one zero zero one, property tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payments, cancellation requests in the MD. When administration receives a property tax cancellation request for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two big categories: requests meeting the criteria of policy one zero one one and requests not meeting the criteria of policy one zero one one. A property tax cancellation request was submitted by a property owner for one property. A review, a review of the request concludes it does not meet the MD policy number one zero one one. The request received is summarized, uh, received is summarized in Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation, uh, policy number one zero one one and penalty cancellation administrative process flow chart are attached in Appendix B. Appendix C includes the request and the tax notices for the properties. Administration recommends that council deny the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and nine dollars sixty-eight cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of a hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. Council's options: number one, the council deny the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-eight cents and the 2020 tax levy penalty of a hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. Option two, that council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-eight cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of a hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. Option three, that council directs administration to bring back admini- additional information on the tax penalty cancellation request to a future meeting of council.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counselor Scarsen?
So I'm just, I'm, I'm just gonna get my head around this. So is there two penalties here on this one?
Correct. There is the one for, there is the one for the September penalty in 2021 and the follow-up arrears penalty in, uh, March of 2022.
So it was, it's, it's two penalties on the same tax year?
Correct. Correct. The very first penalty in September is only the penalty on the current, that year's levy. The following March, what ends up happening is any outstanding taxes is now, uh, penalized. So if they had two or three years of arrears, that March penalty would include all of those arrears.
And so where did this check come from? Like, they, they got the return check? Like, when did this check get cashed?
Uh, it didn't. The original one did not get cashed. And there have been times, and we have, you know, we have some information documented in our offices of the, the timeliness of, of, uh, mail received, uh, by the municipality. And in some cases, we've received in, you know, mail, six, eight months, a year. I think, I believe we have one that's a lot longer than a year, so.
And, I still don't understand. So they got this check back in the mail, then?
That I, that I, I do not know. All I know is the statement that they mailed the check.
So who, who, who put this copy of the check in the folder here?
They submitted to us a copy of the check. So I'm not sure when the copy of the check was actually, uh, made. Was it made before they mailed it out? That I do not know. Um, the property owner would have received the letter prior to the March first penalty stating that they were going to, uh, have penalties if they didn't pay up, uh, what's outstanding. Um, and, uh, as you can see, that they did not submit the request prior to, uh, the March first penalty.
And so then they pay, so they paid the penalty, taxes plus the penalties now? Is that right?
Let's have a look here.
June seventeenth?
Correct. What, what they've paid is everything except the 2022 tax levy. So only the 2022 tax levy is outstanding, and they would have received that notice in, uh, in June of this year.
So the one ninety-five.
Thank you, Counselor Krevjak.
Yeah, Mr. Eve, so you never received the check and neither did they. It never came back to them either, so.
Through the chair, uh, can you repeat that again?
Yeah, I said that in the letter.
Yeah.
It states that you never received the check and it never came back to them either. So, I mean, it's not their fault if they paid it on time.
And unfortunately for, sorry, through the, through the chair to Counsel Krevjak, um, there's nothing that we can do in regards to all of that. All we know is we did not receive the check.
Right.
And because of that, uh, the penalties were applied on the account.
And Mr. Eve, I, I would, I would suggest to council, try, try that argument with your credit card. I mailed the check. Um, you have some responsibility as a landowner, as a credit card holder, as a, if you're the, if you have a loan, you have some, uh, some responsibility to ensure your payment was received and that your, and that your payment was applied to your account. The idea that, well, I mailed the check and here's a copy of the check that I said that I mailed, um, and suddenly, well, we didn't get it. I, I mean, it's, it's, you, you have a responsibility as, as the landowner to pay your taxes on time. I, it just.
And you probably don't take a picture of every check you send.
No, it, it's.
Don't think so.
Exactly. Um, so I said, try that with all your other bills to say, well, I sent you a check, you didn't get it, so I guess it's not my fault.
I've never taken a picture of a check and sent it. It's when you get it back, you take, you can take a picture of it, but if you never got it back, how would you take a picture of it? I don't know. Nobody that takes pictures of their checks before they send it anywhere. That's just my. Yes. All right, uh, just, yeah, Counselor Subchik?
I'll make a motion for a motion, option one.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Counselor Subchik, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council denies the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of two hundred and nine sixty-eight and the 2022 tax levy penalty of nine, uh, sorry, one hundred and ninety-five seventy for roll number sixty-two oh three oh five four double oh two, double zero two. Yes. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Krevjak?
One question. Thank you, Mr. Eve. Do these people always pay their taxes on time? Prior?
Through the chair to Counsel Krevjak, I will have a look. The review of the count is there have not been any penalties applied on the property since, uh, 2012. And it appears that the current owners have been the owners since 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Eve. So that means they've always paid their taxes, at least for the last nine years, on time?
Correct. Through the chair, correct.
Okay, any other, yeah, go ahead.
Isn't there something in policy that states if they paid their taxes on time within five years, that we will allow, uh, uh, to approve their request to cancel?
Through the chair to all of council, uh, yes, the policy has three steps. The very first, uh, uh, measure is, uh, request is for the current tax year penalty. If it, the answer is yes, then the next question is property, uh, the property's current tax levy is paid, and if the answer is yes to that as well, then the third step, uh, council's put in policy is current property owners have not had penalties levied in the last five years, where year one was the current year's levy. So the, the answer is yes, but it's the third, third question after the first two criteria are met. That's what's defined in policy.
So you mean since it was, since there's two penalties on it, that's why?
Sorry, no, um, the very first, uh, the very first, uh, step is, um, was the, is the request for the current year's tax, uh, penalty, that would be in September. Um, the next question is, is the property's, uh, current tax levy paid? So did they pay it all up in full? And then the third one is, after those two are met, taking a look at their property tax history in the last five years, were they always current in paying their taxes? Therefore, no penalties over the last five years on any of the properties that they owned. That's how the policy currently is, is, uh, worded. And that was only to say that all of, any properties that met those three criterias would automatically be in one bucket presented to council, and then everything else would be presented individually for council.
So this one, it doesn't, it doesn't meet those three standards, then?
Correct.
All right. So are you presenting it like that, then, or no?
Through the chair, excuse me?
Like, are you presenting it as such, like that?
Um, I'm presenting it through, as the, uh, as the policy states that this only does not meet the requirements of that policy for, uh, council to consider, uh, saying yes to canceling the, the levies. The policy doesn't exclude council canceling the, the penalties individually. It's just that they're not included in this one bucket of, uh, of meeting all three criteria. Through the chair, did I answer your question?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. You're starting to confuse me now, so. Because you're saying it did meet all three, but now you're saying it doesn't meet all three.
No.
You didn't have me from a loan either.
So in the three questions, this property, um, was the request for the current year tax levy. The answer is no in regards to this request. And the reason for that is the request.
I thought you wanted to be on before.
The request was made in June.
Because it's la- because it's the previous year's.
Correct. And in the policy, the policy states that if the, the, uh, if the, uh, request is received in January or February, uh, council will look at that request as being on December thirty-first of the previous year. This request came in June of this year, so therefore it doesn't even meet the first.
So they have to, like, she would have had to, or they would have to have made the request before June or whatever?
Before March first. So when we, when, uh, taxes and sends out the letter, letting everybody know that the property is subject to penalties, that's the time that we hope that they call us, oh, I thought our properties were paid, and then we would let them know if they were.
But they didn't even know they were in arrears until after March first.
They would have received a tax notice. Or, sorry, they would have received the letter, letting them know the penalty was coming, and that letter would have been sent in February, early February of this year.
And I just have a question on the same line. Is it only, do you only send one letter saying you've missed it, or do you send two?
We send one at the beginning of March, or sorry, at the beginning of, uh, February.
So they should have, they should have got the letter in February saying you've missed your, your payments, and they said they didn't know anything until June third, 2022, when they got their new assessment, which is kind of weird. Like, why wouldn't you know, though? They didn't get the letter. I don't know. It's kind of weird.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yes, maybe there were issues. Who knows what, health or whatever. We don't know.
Depending, depending where in the MD, too. We did have issues with our mailboxes being broken into a lot. Like in Fort Kent, they were being broken into all, when they got, just got their new boxes, but they were being broke into almost, almost on a weekly basis. So that, it's a possibility, where if we only send one letter out, maybe they didn't get it from us. I don't know.
All right. We have a motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, okay, I'll call for the vote. This motion is defeated. It's defeated. When it's three three, it's defeated. Need a different motion.
Sorry, Mr. Eve, but if you make the other motion, it could be a tie as well. I'll make the motion to cancel the, uh, the tax arrears.
Number two?
No.
No?
Yeah, number two. It was number two, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Just a point of order. Would it not automatically be granted that they're, they're canceled then? Because we made a motion, we, the, the motion to deny the request for cancellation was defeated, which would mean, in my mind, that would mean that it's automatically their taxes get canceled.
Thank you, Mr. Eve. Members of council, I think, uh, Counselor Crick is technically correct, but I think the, I think the, um, the proper way would be to address that through a motion, so there's clear direction. Um, otherwise, it's a negative motion. We're not going to do something because council didn't pass a resolution. So I, I would prefer that we don't do something because council has told us not to do something.
So, Mr. Eve?
Yes.
To, to CEO, if this one's defeated, also a tie, then what happens?
Let's, uh, cross that bridge, um, after we get there.
Well, I'm crossing it now.
Um, I, and then we'll, then we'll end up with a, a couple of more defeated motions. Then we'll have zero direction because.
No, then we'll have to bring it back on September fourteenth.
Then we would bring it back if, at a future council meeting. That's exactly what would happen.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Krevjak, for making a motion on, on behalf of council. The council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalties of two hundred and nine sixty-eight and the 2022 tax levy penalties of one ninety-five seventy for the roll number six twenty thirty fifty-four double zero two. Any discussion? Yes, counsel?
I'll just add that, um, you know, this person has paid their taxes since day one. They lived here, and this four hundred dollars means a lot more than I'm sure that it is to us, so that's all I'll add.
All right, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. Carrie. On to nine four four.
Request for tax penalty cancellations, rolls nine seven zero zero four two two one oh seven and nine six three oh four twenty-six four zero five. The MD of Bonneville, or sorry, uh, MD policy number one zero one one, property tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalties, penalty payment cancellation requests in the MD. When administration receives a property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories: requests meeting the criteria of policy one zero one one and requests not meeting criteria of policy one zero one one. The property tax cancellation request was submitted by Senovis for two properties. Review of the request, uh, concludes it does not meet MD policy number one zero one one. The request, the request received is summarized in Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation, MD policy number one zero one one and penalty cancellation administrative process flow chart are attached as Appendix B. Appendix C includes the requests and the tax notice of the properties. Administration recommended action: that council denies the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents for roll number nine seven zero zero two, zero four two two one oh seven, and the 2021 tax penalty of a hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents and the two thou- uh, and 2022 tax levy penalty of one hundred and five dollars and seventy-nine cents for roll number nine sixty-three oh four twenty-six four oh five. Council options are one: the council denies the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents for roll nine seven zero zero four twenty-two one zero seven and the 2021 tax levy penalty of a hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of a hundred and five dollars and seventy-nine cents for roll number sixty-three oh four, nine sixty-three oh four twenty-six four oh five. Option two: that council approves the request to cancel the 2021 tax levy penalty of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents and the 2022 tax levy, uh, penalty of a one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents for roll number nine seven zero zero four two two one zero seven and the 2021 tax levy penalty of a hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents and the 2022 tax levy penalty of a hundred and five dollars and seventy-nine cents for roll number nine sixty-three oh four twenty-six four oh five. Third option is that council directs administration to bring back additional information on the tax penalty cancellation request, uh, to a future meeting of council. And in this request, criteria one was not met, as the, um, uh, letter was not received or the notice was, for the request was received in July of 2022, not prior to March first.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Scarsen.
So, I mean, it's my understanding that when you, when you buy a property, the seller usually pays the taxes for the year?
Through the chair, um, to all of council, that is dependent upon the, the buyer and the seller and the lawyers that are representing the buyer and the seller, also depending upon whether or not the tax notice has already been sent out. So it's, we, we see all, uh, all gamuts of how that's done.
So this one was sent to Caravita?
Correct.
What was the second one? Was it sent, it says not yet assigned.
Yes. So that one there, at the time that the notice was sent out, that one there was, we didn't have the information as to who the actual taxable person was. So then once we, uh, we sent it out, then that would go to the proper channels to the person. What we do find is that with the big companies, they end up calling us prior to the penalty, uh, the penalty date, and they'll ask us for a list.
uh, the penalty date, and they'll ask us for a listing of all their properties. They also, when they receive their assessment notices from the province, they'll take their assessment notices and reconcile them to the municipal tax notices, to make sure they've got all the tax notices for every property that they own. So there were other avenues to collect that information, to, uh, know what was still outstanding.
Yeah, it sounds like they just missed it, so I'll go ahead and make the motion for number one.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council. Excuse me. That council denies the request to cancel the two thousand twenty-one tax penalty of one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine seventy-one and the two thousand twenty-two tax levy penalty of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three oh seven for the roll number nine seven zero zero four two two one zero seven, as well as the two thousand twenty-one tax levy penalty of one hundred and thirteen thirty-four, and the two thousand twenty-two tax levy penalty of one hundred and five ninety, uh, sorry, one hundred and five seventy-nine for the roll number nine six three zero four two six four oh zero five. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
So, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Spalco, is the, what's the penalty, is it twelve percent and ten percent, or?
It's through the chair to all of council, correct, it is twelve percent September, ten percent in March first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that was Carrie, I, I think. Carrie?
Thank you, council.
Nine five point one.
Good afternoon, council, now that you got all the hard stuff out of the way, it's time for the easy ones.
So who's after you?
There you go. Uh, this R F D is, uh, for the Infrastructure Services two thousand twenty-two Quarterly Report, April to June. Attached as appendix A is the quarterly, uh, quarterly update of projects for Infrastructure Services. Transportation and Infrastructure staff will be presenting the report, so, uh, members of the Infrastructure Services team will be presenting updates of the projects. So I'll have, uh, have the team come up.
I was just gonna tell you, you're gonna do it yourself, you didn't have a team here.
They left already, I guess.
Uh, good afternoon, Reeve Kalinsky, good afternoon, council, it's been a little while since I spoke in front, so I apologize if I'm a little bit nervous, but, uh.
Good afternoon. You always say that, but then you hit it out of the ballpark.
I don't know about that. Um, I get to, uh, update our roads, capital construction projects for the year, which of course isn't too much update this year, because we did hit the pause button on most of these projects, uh, last fall for budgetary reasons. Um, I do, we do have a list of about six paving projects and about six gravel road projects that were in progress when we hit the pause button, uh, there are various stages of construction, some of them have been designed and are ready to go out for tender for construction. Uh, some of them have had the preliminary engineering work complete, and some of them, we, uh, were in the process of hiring an engineer through R F P at the time, and, uh, we did never award the, uh, the engineering contract. Uh, our intent through the, uh, upcoming budget process would be to work with council to, uh, uh, review this list and, uh, decide what a good go-forward plan for, uh, capital road construction would be. Again, I, I guess part of the reason I'm presenting this is, I've been working on the Canusu Ski Hill, uh, chairlift replacement, uh, with just the bridges going on, of course, our workload has been reduced a little bit, so. Um, are there any questions on the four, on the projects that we have listed here specifically?
Doesn't look like it.
Got off easy.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, great job.
Good afternoon, council, uh, my name's Ryan Piché, and I'm the new engineering tech with, uh, M D. I'll be presenting some of the sections of the quarterly update today. First one will be subdivisions, Ardmore Main Street, surface, and underground. Condition assessment was completed, and it was determined that life cycle replacement was not required for the underground utilities. Uh, there are two underground repairs that were required after reviewing the condition assessment, which was a small section of sanitary sewer that had to be repaired, as well the replacement of a fire hydrant. These repairs were completed at the beginning of the construction season. Alberta Transportation has currently milled the first, uh, sorry, Alberta Transportation has currently milled the first lift, and laid the first lift to asphalt, and will be following with a second lift shortly. Ardmore Back Alley's, uh, the in, in-house survey has been completed, we are currently exploring potential options to upgrade some of the back alleys, construction has been, has been deferred till next year. And then Thirian, uh, ACOM has completed a condition assessment on the infrastructure in Thirian. The T N U team is currently reviewing the condition assessment in order to phase out some of the proposed work.
Think you scared the guy there, Mike.
Sorry? Any questions regarding subdivisions?
Yeah, so what do you mean, like, what does the assessment study in Thirian, what does that entail exactly?
So ACOM would have layered, uh, priorities on which infrastructure, uh, should be replaced first, so.
So, I guess my question is, what infrastructure, like, what are they assessing there?
Uh, roads, sidewalks, underground, they had CCTV done on all the sewer, um, and also the lift station, and, and the sanitary dump station as well.
Yes, Counselor Sawyer.
So this is gonna, this is gonna be a little bit of tougher one, but Ardmore, uh, Ardmore Main Street Underground was done, laid in nineteen eighty, the same as the rest of it? And so when S E Design did the study about five years ago, they said it had to be replaced as of all the other infrastructure. And so I'm just really surprised now that we've just said that it was all fine and good. Yeah, and, and are we saying that, though, because the, the province was supposed to tell us when they're gonna do Main Street, and we were supposed to work with them and have our, all the underground done, and then have them pave it, and that just didn't happen because I don't think we were quite ready to do that underground work when the province came through. So, you know, it just seems weird that we had, you know, we pay an engineering company who I think we trusted to look at the underground, and they said it should have been replaced, and now we're saying it's all good.
Mr. Reeve and members of council, um, is there an accusation in that question?
Well, I'm not sure.
Because I, I certainly sensed an accusation that we, we changed something because we couldn't work with the province in time. We did a condition assessment, the condition assessment has that underground being viable for another seven to ten years. There was no point in spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on it, and I would suggest to council that the idea that at a public meeting, a counselor would accuse staff.
I'm not accusing staff.
That's certainly what, that's certainly what came across us.
I'm just asking the question.
We did an assessment on it years ago, we've done an assessment this year, and it came across that the seven to ten years of viability left in that underground.
Well, thank you.
Good afternoon, Reeve, council.
Good afternoon.
I'll just brief you on the bridges. Uh, we have nine bridges that were on the books, four of which were, uh, completed now, they were done either in two thousand twenty-one or earlier this year. Just like to update you on a couple of them, uh, item number three, Bridge File eight five zero seven four, Frog Lake Tributary, that tender did close on the sixteenth of August. The Go Better was in line contracting, uh, but that is actually subject to a request for decision that is coming up, I believe, later today. And the second one is item number six, uh, Bridge File, Bridge File eight zero five three zero on Range Road four ninety-two at Columbine Creek, that tender, uh, actually was released and it closes on the thirtieth of August. So by the end of, uh, two thousand twenty-one, we expect we'll have either three, there's either three new bridges or bridge culverts by the end of this year. And there's, there are some, uh, on the books for two thousand twenty, design this year and construction next year, but there's really nothing to report on them as yet, they really haven't gotten anything off the ground in terms of preliminary engineering. When we do have something, we'll let you know.
Okay, any, any questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to drainage, um, this year, I got the opportunity to work weekly on Countryside Country Lane Drainage Project. All ditching and culvert installation for this project has been completed. This includes hydroseating and fixing any driveways that were affected during culvert installation. The remainder of the work involves expansion of the two existing storm ponds, and the addition of erosion control measures to the Erlacher Ditch just north of Countryside Estates. Overall, this project is approximately eighty percent complete.
Thank you, any questions to that, or any comments? Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Afternoon, Reeve and councillors.
Good afternoon.
To carry on with the drainage, we have a couple here, Sunset Beach, so the bore, the boring of the high-density polyethylene pipe to reroute the surface runoff through our municipal reserve is complete, as well as the outfall structure. The catch basin at the inlet has been installed, just waiting on the top grate, which requires modifications, and then we'll be grading a ditch to run into this new culvert. Um, the culvert.
Let me just stop you for a second, so are you saying then that where that culvert goes, like, is that where the, everything drains on that side of the road? Is that what the intent there is?
So, yes.
And they're putting like, uh, like a manhole cover kind of thing?
There is a manhole installed already to catch basin, and then it's just to cover the grading, yeah.
So everything from the fields and everything, everything kind of comes to there, and then, I didn't, I couldn't see where, where does it end up? Does it end up into, straight into the lake?
Two hundred and twenty meters away on the, on the, the, the road, service road, and then it crosses into our municipal reserve through two culvers, where, where that outfall structure is.
Is it above ground at, at all?
Yes, it, it just at the two spots, the inlet and the outlet.
Okay, yeah, but that's what I mean, so there's not, it's, the water is gonna be underground right till it gets to the lake.
That's right, it's approximately four meters deep the entire way.
Okay.
Uh, there's a culvert to clean out the north end, and that should be completed next week, and the rip and relay started this week, we plan to be out of there by the end of next week before school starts. Uh, two thousand twenty-two operational drainage projects, there was twelve that were planned for this year, three of them have been completed, four are, are ready to complete, we have all the approvals in place, and five are still in the planning stages. Any questions on the drainage?
Nope.
Thank you.
Oh, Monte, one question.
I've got one question, the culvert that you guys bury, I'm just curious, what size culvert do you guys like put in there, like?
Through the reef, to Counselor Slipchik, at Sunset you're referring to? It's twenty-four inch H D P, so it's that plastic that's an inch thick, infused together.
Hello again. Um, building infrastructure, uh, the Greater Shop for Beaver Crossing, we have not yet selected a location, uh, but that is going to be up for review for the two thousand twenty-three budget. Uh, the Ardmore and Fort Kent Fire Halls are essentially complete, I believe the Ardmore Grand Opening, I believe, is Saturday. Uh, Fort Kent has had theirs already, so they are actually, the buildings are now occupied, we just have some minor landscaping to touch up, uh, and as I'm sure you're all aware, that's, it is subject of a, it's a legal issue. Uh, any questions on those three?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, Counselor Crick, and then Counselor.
Yeah, just a quick question in regards to Ardmore Fire Hall, the one bay on the greater side's been da, the door, the trim's been damaged, and.
Through the reef, yes, council, it's been prepared as of this morning.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Was it you at the damage site, or? You said, so did I hear you right, you said there's legal, uh, there's something legal with the landscaping?
No, 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 just for the whole construction of the fire halls, because it was actually taken out of the hands of the general contractor.
So landscaping can be done still?
So they, just some minor landscaping, um, some of it was done, some, it just needs to be touched up a little bit, needs to be seeded, it's audited, other than that, they're, they're essentially complete. Anything further?
But, any other questions?
I'll just move along then to the airports. Uh, the taxiway upgrade and the lighting replacement were completed in two thousand twenty-one. As for the new, uh, or a new terminal building, uh, an R F P that had closed towards the end of July has been awarded to Cowan Design and Drafting at Cold Lake, and I will be meeting with her actually tomorrow to review some of her preliminary drawings and so forth, she's generating some three D, uh, images of a new terminal building for us.
Yeah, so, is, so a terminal building, like, you're talking about, like, so what does that mean, like, by, is it, so, is it, is that complicated, is it just a building? Like, you need to have it?
The, the existing terminal is, was constructed, I believe, in nineteen eighty-four, and it's starting to show signs of age.
Yeah, I get it, we're replacing it, but I'm saying the building itself, isn't it just a, what's an internal building?
Uh, through the reef, I'm not sure you understand your question, sir.
So, so through the reef, to Counselor Skarson and to the rest of the council, so what we're trying to do is, uh, is just get a very simple architectural design on a building, um, that will meet a variety of needs, uh, potentially that has some growth potential, uh, uh, services stubbed in a wall if it ever needed to be expanded, and a few of those type things, and also what we can do with the budget we have, which is somewhere in that eight hundred thousand dollar vicinity. Um, some questions whether or not we are going to add on to the existing, use existing infrastructure, or if we're gonna bulldoze it, so we've kind of reached out, and it, the, the, uh, the request for proposal that was sent out is not particularly expensive, um,
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars, and that's, that's to get a design and, uh, um, and get started on what the new building would look like, provide some, otherwise we'd just sit around and try to figure out on a, on a, basically on a piece of paper what the building should look like, so we're trying to get some design ideas as to what that building would look like, um, and what we can do for the price that we have.
So are we gonna, we'll see that come here first?
Well, absolutely, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, once we receive it, it'll be brought to council.
I'm just curious on what, what you would have in a terminal building, I mean, it's just a, like, it's a holdings building for people, isn't it, like, what else?
Well, there, that's, that's a very good question, because there are some, uh, there are some other, uh, external pressures on what the building, for example, the Flying Club would like to be able to maintain their equipment in the terminal building, uh, they currently have their computer for all the fuel, um, in the terminal building. Should it have a boardroom? Uh, obviously, the waiting area, um, we need better bathrooms, uh, currently, it's a, it's a, uh, it's a one-holeer, both the men's and the, and the ladies' side, um, and that's been an issue long-term, is we need, we need significantly more washroom facilities, uh, in the building. Uh, again, expandability of that building in the event that five, ten years from now, we wanted to do, we wanted to add to it, potentially maybe WestJet comes to town in five years, what would we have to add on to that building, want to make sure that building is designed in such a way that we've got services stubbed into a wall, that if WestJet came, we could add on to that building to allow, uh, for whatever their requirements would be for baggage and conveyor belts, et cetera, et cetera. So that's really for us, the big thing is, well, um, we just, we could just go out and build a house package, just similar to what sits there, but would that be impeding us five, six, ten years down the road?
Uh, through the reef, but I have a, I can elaborate on a little, on that a little bit, uh, part of the criteria for the design was to include a boardroom, uh, separate men's and women's washrooms, uh, a fairly generous-sized waiting area that can accommodate probably in the neighborhood of thirty people, uh, like a car rental counter, uh, some vending machines and things like that, that, that you would normally see in an, in an airport, uh, just to make travelers who are coming in for business and our pleasure just a little more comfortable, and we've asked, uh, the designer to incorporate the things that we associate with the Lakeland, sort of make it aesthetically pleasing and, you know, multifunctional, and it is, there is room for expansion, uh, in the design, or there will be. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
So the Rip and Relay Program, five locations are complete, one is ongoing, and then that'll wrap up the priority one, we're approximately two-thirds of the way through the quantity, so we're gonna start, um, visiting the priority two locations. The shoulder pull program, they're both self-performed and some contracted work, four of the seven self-performed shoulder pulls have been completed, and the first of the two contracted shoulder pulls is completed yesterday, and they are moving to. pulls is completed yesterday, and they are moving to Primrose, Primrose Lake Road, um, four twenty to do a section there. Um, road maintenance and material supply, the twenty twenty-two dust control list has been completed with the exception of the reapplication on some shoulder pull sections and some industry roads where we are sharing the cost of the work. The twenty twenty-two brushing and cleanup, brushing cleanup and ditch improvements has started. This work was awarded to, um, DeAngelis Development Corporation at Edmonton, and they've started last week in the Alexander area. And the cold mix production and gravel supply has been completed in the second quarter as well. Any questions?
How's that shoulder pull thing going?
Um, it's going through the reef, through the reef. It's going well. Um, have some concerns with some residents, but we've been, you know, explaining what our policy is and the, and the rationale for it. But overall, it's well received, as is the, the Rip and Relay as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, if I could add, uh, because not all of the council might be aware, so we brought in a, a company this year called Recall Gravel, and Recall, um, and, and I think I've mentioned this to council before, has a very unique piece of equipment, kind of the world's largest rototiller. And if you get a chance to go out and see them in action, it's actually quite something. But what, uh, what ends up happening with gravel roads over the years is they get pounded out to a twelve or a thirteen meter wide top, and everybody thinks that's what the gravel road should look like. So when we do a shoulder pull, we bring in all that material that has been pounded out, um, making the road way too wide, and we bring it back to what the county road standard is. And in our case, the MD road standard, uh, for most local roads is either an eight and a half meter or a nine meter road top. Um, one of the reasons we don't like to have a twelve meter top road is if you have a road that's twelve meters wide, it obviously takes twelve meters wide worth of gravel. Um, when you bring those back into standard, in this case, eight and a half or nine meters, depending on the, the exact road, uh, you obviously reduce the gravel that's required and you reduce the cost of, of that road. However, the, uh, the downside is, is because people are used to a road top that's twelve meters across, is when they start driving on what is actually the standard at an eight and a half meter road, they start worrying about, well, the road's too narrow. Uh, when in actual fact, it's what the road was supposed to have been in the first place. These roads will all pound back out again over the course of the years. They'll all widen out a little bit. But, uh, we have had some concerns from residents saying that the road's too narrow, when in actual fact, the road is actually the width that the, the MD road standard has it to be either eight and a half or nine meters, again, depending on what classification of road that it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councillor Kreviak.
Thank you. So you say the standard is eight point five meters?
I'd, I'd leave it to Brian, but in most cases, our roads are eight and a half meters to nine meters width. Through the, through the reef, to all of council, yes, our, we're, uh, our standards vary on the classification of road, and that's all in the, uh, in the road constructions policy. But, uh, on average, our gravel roads are going to be about, depending on what classification they're at, they're going to be about an eight and a half meter top.
Because, uh, on township six thirty, the first mile was, uh, eight meters and one spot, seven point seven.
Okay, uh, that was what road, six thirty?
Six thirty, from eight eighty-one-
Yep.
Going west.
I would, I, I would actually be very surprised that Recall Gravel is, uh, they have a horde of people out there. They measure those roads, um, on a pretty, uh, every, every ten or fifteen or twenty meters, they're actually measuring the width to make sure those roads are what we've asked for. Um, so I'm not sure who's out actually measuring the roads other than our contractors, but, um, but, uh, I'd, I'd be surprised at that.
That's information came from who? Just someone phoned you?
No, I had, just happened to be there when the guy was there, so I just, yeah. But there are the, after the one mile, it's eight point five, which is good. And then after that, it, I guess it tapers off because the dust control there is only eight meters too. So, I mean, that's okay.
So, uh, through the reef, uh, to Councillor Kreviak, um, manager of transportation just told me that, uh, that was our road specification for that class of road, which is Class Four, is an eight point zero meter top. So, uh, i- if it's an eight meter top, it would meet our standard. Uh, if it did come in a little bit to a seven point seven, I would, we can check that out-
Yeah, that's okay, yeah, but, uh, I thought you said it was, it's not, so it's not eight point five, it's eight?
Well, again, without going through each, each, uh, classification specifically, I said, on average, uh, we're about an eight and a half meter top, depending on what class of road it is. Uh, we go to Class, uh, up to Class Six, so. Okay, and, uh, so the last, uh, the last thing on the list here is the feasibility studies. So with the feasibility studies, we have the bulk septicage and water haul, or sorry, bulk septicage hauling, uh, within the MD. In the last, uh, in the last quarter, we, uh, council has, uh, uh, come to a resolution on that, so that is, uh, complete there. Uh, some additional projects that we are working on, uh, we've touched on those already. Uh, we're working on Kinissou. We're helping, uh, uh, the Parks and Recreation staff with the, the development of Kinissou, as well as the road ditch and brushing cleanup. So that ends the, uh, that ends the, uh, update, the Q two update for Infrastructure Services. If there are any questions.
Councillor Slipchick.
Yeah, I got a question on the shoulder post, sorry about that. But on the shoulder post, they do the approaches to, uh, Brian?
Uh, through the reef to Councillor Slipchuck, when they come up to an approach, they will move over the, over the approach. So they won't touch the approach at all. They'll widen, or they'll, they'll narrow it up, up to the approach, and then they'll skip over the approach and then continue on.
Like say if they're, like, I know if we're going over the approach, but say if that was that other road, would they narrow the approaches if they're working on that road, would they come through the approach as well? Because like, we're seeing approaches get pounded out too, right? Are they doing anything on the approaches?
Sorry, I'm, uh, when they're, when we're narrowing up the road and we come to the approach, we just taper it, uh, taper back into the approach, skip the approach, and then continue on. I, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
The road pull doesn't work on the going into the person, please?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
All right. Uh, so the projects have, uh, been included in the twenty twenty-two capital operations budget, and it's administration's recommendation that council accepts the Infrastructure Services tw- uh, twenty twenty-two quarterly report for April to June as information.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion for option one.
Okay. Hey, uh, thank you, Councillor Slipchick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the Infrastructure Services twenty twenty-two quarterly report for April to June as information. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you, guys.
Carrie.
Uh, thank you, council, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank, uh, thank the team. There's a lot of moving parts in, uh, Infrastructure Services, and, uh, the presenters today are just a small part of the team. They're a big part of the team, but they're, uh, uh, they're a small part of, uh, of all the men and women that, uh, work out of Infrastructure Services and, and, uh, just without them, it was, it'd be a tough job for me. So, uh, I just want to, you know, give them a thanks to, for doing a great job. So the next, uh, next item on the agenda is Emerald Estates subdivision, water and sewer request update. At a regular meeting of council on April twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, a delegation represented Emerald, Emerald Estates presented an interest in having water and sewer services brought to Emerald Estates. A motion from council had administration tasked with providing additional information for the services in Appendix A. Administration enlisted the services of a consultant to provide a high-level estimate for multiple servicing options, Appendix B. Corporate Services then calculated the annual cost to lot owners through a local improvement levy, Appendix C. This information was shared with council, and a local ward councillor discussed the servicing options and costs with the delegation. The reference to the strategic plan is, uh, goal number three, which is sustainable infrastructure that meets the needs of the community. Costs and sources of funding, if council decided to proceed with the feasibility study, the estimated cost would be approximately thirty thousand and would be funded from the twenty twenty-two operational budget. Administration recommends that council direct administration on how to proceed, and the options are listed below.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion for option number three.
All right, thank you, Councillor Scar, Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the water and sewer request update for Emerald Estates subdivision as information. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, in putting the information out to them, the, if it can be done with, if we can get a grant, then the, the residents there probably would likely go for having town water put into there. But if the, if there's no possibility of a grant, and I did forward the email, uh, I think you've probably seen that one with, from Shannon Stubbs' office with the library apartment with grant options. I know we've looked into a bunch of them and, but if, I guess we can receive it as information, but if we, if there's a grant available and it can be feasible, then it should be brought back and, and we can look at it further.
Uh, through the reef to Councillor Crick's question and all of council, I did get, receive that email, and I forwarded it off to our grants coordinator. And, uh, the research that we've done is that there, through the big, uh, funding models, there are no monies available. There was one available that could potentially have, uh, a maximum of about seven hundred thousand, uh, for the project. That wouldn't even cover twenty-five percent of, uh, of even the lowest level of servicing that we were, that, that was in the option. So, um, there would still be a seventy-five percent of a two and a half million dollar project that would have to be, uh, uh, recouped, um, for, i- to install the services. So grant funding is, uh, although there is some there, there's not a lot, and it's, it, it's, it's not much, uh, in, in the scope of the project.
And, and Mr. Reeve, if I could, uh, if I could add to what Mr. Bespolko said, um, one of the issues that we have with grant funding is there's other areas in the MD that are also been screaming for water for a long time. And I would require some direction from council as to what areas you'd like us to prioritize in terms of, uh, of focusing on grants. Um, if Emerald Estates is, uh, a high priority, then we can certainly focus on that from a grant perspective. But there are other areas of the MD that have been asking for water, uh, for a long time as well. And I, I would hesitate myself to go out and apply for a grant for one area, only to find out the council has a priority in another area. So I, I would leave it to council to give us some direction as to what areas should we be applying for. The airport, for example, could use water and sewer. Cherry Grove, obviously, Deputy Reeve Fadav was not here this afternoon, but he's been, he's been fighting for water and sewer for Cherry Grove for a long time, and, uh, and Emerald Estates has popped up Friday recently. So I, I would leave it to council to direct me as to where you would like us to focus our efforts in terms of arranging grant funding. Uh, because we're not going to get grant funding for all the areas of the MD that require water and sewer. Uh, so I would, I'd certainly need some direction from council.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, on to nine five point three.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve. This RFD is for the Emerald Estates walking trail update. At the regular meeting of council on April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, council tasked administration with proceeding with engineering plans for a recreation trail from Emerald Estates to the town of Bonneville. Administration contacted Stan Tech Engineering, as they are the engineer for the town of Bonneville sidewalk project that the MD would connect to, to provide an engineering proposal attached as Appendix A, along with a high-level estimate of project costing, which is Appendix B. Having a walking trail connecting Emerald Estates to the town of Bonneville would increase the safety of pedestrians walking to and from the subdivision to town. Walk, uh, crossing the water course speeding into Barrier Lake may be challenging from an environmental perspective. The caution, excuse me, that, the motion passed by council on April twenty-second states that council directs administration to proceed with engineering for the recreational trail from Emerald Estates connecting to a planned trail to be constructed by the town of Bonneville in preparation for the po, for possible construction in twenty twenty-three. Uh, references to strategic plan is goal four, uh, enhance livability of the community. Reference to provincial and federal legislation is, uh, federal and provincial environmental legislation. Costs and sources of funding, one, to be determined, or at the twenty twenty-three budget deliberations, or two, if council decides to proceed with the engineering this year, the source of funding would be the twenty twenty-two Planning and Community Services Capital Budget Trail Master Plan. Administration's recommendation is that council rescinds Resolution twenty-two point two three eight passed on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at the regular meeting of council. And furthermore, the council directs administration to bring the engineering costs for a recreational trail from Emerald Estates connecting to a planned trail, uh, to be constructed by the town of Bonneville back to the twenty twenty-three budget deliberations for council consideration.
Thank you.
So is there, is there currently funds in, like, do we have the funds in that trail fund for the engineering right now?
Uh, through the reef to, uh, Councillor Crick's question, uh, in discussion with, uh, with planning and community services, there is money in an engineering budget for this, uh, if we were to proceed with engineering this year.
Councillor Spire?
I have a question about the, the length of that trail. And, and because it looks like the town's already finished or almost finished their trail that would join that? Have they? There's a new trail there that I just kind of drove across the other day, but is that a-
There's a, about a block that's not, uh, covered-
In the town.
In the town. So the, the, the town, the town's sidewalk right now ends at the Petrocan station, and there's about a block between the Petrocan and the boundary. So whatever that would be, probably two hundred fifty meters-ish, I would guess. And then our trail running to Emerald Estates is about, about a half a kilometer, six hundred meters or something. So we, so we would be, the town has already indicated to me that they're not interested in the piece in town. We would have to do the entire piece, uh, from Emerald Estates right to, uh, right to the, where their sidewalk starts at the Petrocan station.
So my question is, if we engineer this, are we gonna, like, are we gonna do this, first of all? Or, like, why should we spend money on engineering if we don't plan on doing it in the future? Are we planning on doing this for sure?
Mr. Reeve, I, it's, I would assume we're, we'd already kind of planned on doing that because they've, they've, it's like they're almost finished their trail to six, what's that, backroads? Six fifty-seven?
It's still on the other side of the road. It doesn't, it stops, we stopped across the highway.
No, that's my point. They've built a trail there and it just ends now. It appears that it just ends, so we, I would have thought we would have had some discussion maybe. I'm not sure about finishing it.
Yeah, I just don't know what this is going to cost.
Yeah, I think what the, what happened was the town was putting their trail in this spring, and we thought we could maybe just piggyback on top of their, their contract or what, do whatever, get onto the same contract and just extend it and get it all done all at one time, have, potentially have a savings. But I think, seeing as how that's not happening, we can, uh, put this into the budget deliberations and then go from there. So I'll make the motion number one.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Councillor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council rescinds Resolution number two, two point two three eight passed on April twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting of council. And furthermore, that council directs administration to bring back, to bring the engineering costs for the recreational trail from Emerald Streets connecting to be planned, to a planned trail to be constructed by the town of Bonneville back to the two thousand twenty-three budget deliberations for council's consideration. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, we have addition nine point five point four, Bridge Frog Lake, I think, or somewhere there.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This RFD is for the 2022 Construction Award for Bridge File 85074, the Frog Lake Tributary. The RFD for the award of Bridge File 85074 Frog Lake Tributary, located on Range Road 433 between Township Road 580 and 583, culvert replacement project. This project was advertised for tender on APC and the MD website on July 27, 2022, and closed on August 16, 2022. The work on this project includes the replacement of the existing bridge culvert with a new 1.83 meter smooth wall steel pipe, 115 meters in length. The existing culvert has come to the end of its useful life, and the culvert roof is starting to sag in places. Due to the thickness of the overburden on the existing culvert, the new bridge culvert will have to be installed by tunneling and boring. The west end of the culvert is located on First Nations territory, and this work has been authorized by a Frog Lake First Nation Band Council Resolution. At the tender closing on August 16, 2022, three bids were received. Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions evaluated and scored the proponents. Inline Contract Unlimited was ranked the highest scoring proponent after the evaluation. And you can see the evaluation below. Appendix A is the location map. Appendix B is the consultant's award recommendation letter and bid summary. And Appendix C is the consultant's project budget review. The culvert is located under an important ACP paved road that is the only MD-based access to Fishing Lake Métis settlement. There's no reference to the strategic plan or provincial and federal legislation. Approved funding is in the 2022, sorry, approved funding in the 2022 budget is 1.3 million dollars. The budget required for construction and engineering and contingency is 1.925, 525 million. Unbudgeted funds to come from the Bridge Reserve, Bridge Fund Reserve. Administration recommends that council approves the additional 630,000 to the 2022 capital budget for Bridge File 85074 Frog Lake Tributary Project. Unbudgeted funds to come from the Bridge Reserve Fund.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Scarson.
I'm just curious, so if you, if you had to get permission from Frog Lake First Nations because it's on their territory, why aren't they covering some of the costs?
Through the reef to Counselor Scarson and the rest of council. This is an MD road. We just needed their permission because part of the, part of the outfall of it is going to be on First Nation land. We needed a, a working easement, that kind of thing, to go onto their land to, to do that, just to make, in order to have workspace for the whole project.
And secondly, so the budget had 1.3 million, and it, so the closest we come was 1.9. So is that, like, is that how much it's gone up since we budgeted that in the last fall? Or is that, like, how is it so much different?
Through the reef to Counselor Scarson. I would suggest that late in the year tendering and increases in, in everything that's increased over the, over the course of the last couple of years, steel, fuel, labor even, equipment prices, that all contributed to, to this, to this.
So is this something that might be better to, to tender for next spring?
Through the reef, I would, I would suggest that that's a hit and miss. Perhaps we might get a, a, a better price in the spring, but it doesn't look like any prices are coming down anytime soon. So again, we could take that chance. It might work, it might not, it, it might come in 10% higher, it could come in 10% lower.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we, we've always talked since I've been around that when things are, you know, things cost more than we anticipate, or quite a bit more, that we always delay, but it never seems like we do. So I wonder if this is one that needs to be done this year? I mean, you mentioned late in the season, right? So is it costing more just because of the time of the year as well? Like, if this was put out in the winter for a spring project, is that gonna save us some money?
And through the reef, I, I don't know that. I don't know that. I, what I do know is when, during budget deliberations, council made it a priority to deal with bridges, even though all of our other capital projects were, like, like Todd mentioned, we hit the pause button on. Council decided that bridges were one of the things that we weren't going to because we had to, we had to keep up with them for to not get behind in, in bridges. The assessment on this bridge is that it's at the life, lifespan end. The, the ceiling of the, of the culvert is collapsing already, and we just, we need to do some work on this one, I, I would suggest this year.
So then, do you, like, for all these bridges that you guys are, have assessed, is there traffic counts for each one as well? Like, this one here is going to nowhere, it seems like, or where is it going to?
Through the reef, this bridge is a, it, it's a, like it says, it's the, it's the only artery from Frog Lake Settlement to Bonneville. So this is a, this would be a major, a major route. It's a, it's a paved road. I would suggest that it's a, it's a highly trafficked area.
Counselor Crick?
So this is an, a ma, only main, main artery from Fishing Lake Settlement into Bonneville? And it's our, it's an MD paved road with ACF pavement?
That's correct.
And did we, like, do we pay for everything for the road? Again, what I'm wondering is are we, are we basically building a road for the settlement at, at our cost? And if so, I guess there was already there, so it's, I just think there's, there definitely could have been a better road to pave in the past, that's for sure.
So through the reef to council, they're good questions. However, the road does fall in the MD, and it is an MD road. Regardless of what areas of the, of the region that it services, it's still our road and still our responsibility. I think there is some potential, and some potential validity in waiting and re-tendering the project in December, early January, and see if that changes prices. But that is, but there is a, there's a certain risk to that, that we'll come in at even a higher price as opposed to a lower price. But in terms of who pays for the road and where the road goes, those are, it's an MD road, and we don't really have why it got paved in the past to service the settlement. Is it, it's a separate question, but it is what it is today, the bridge is failing, so.
I guess I, it's, it's really, even though it's our road, it's really not servicing the, it's hardly servicing the MD at all. There is a couple quarter sections of MD landing down that road, but very little. Could we not just, like, narrow that one section of the road, dig it out, and put a short culvert in there? And if the settlement or the reserve, because it goes, there's part of Frog Lake's around there, if they want to chip in and help pay for this project, well then, yeah, let's do the whole thing, keep the same with the road.
So you're, so the suggestion then would be that we would treat this road differently because of where it goes than our other MD ACP paved roads?
That's right.
Okay, no, it's, um, I.
Just based on who it's serving.
Okay.
We're not, we're not gonna build, we don't build a, a road, if you go past the ski hill, I think the road turns to gravel just before it gets to Saskatchewan there. We're not gonna pave the road going into the next province, just, just to finish paving the road for sake of paving, I don't think.
But, but in that example, we are cold mixed right to the boundary.
Right to the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Counselor Sutcher.
Yeah, okay, you said that, thank you guys noticed the sagging in the roof already. So right now, we know there is a safety issue. Once we know there's a safety issue, if something happens, reliable, aren't we? Like, we just, I just read in the paperwork, St. Paul just had a bridge collapse on them. And, like, I don't want to see that happening here, and we get lots of traffic on that road.
Yeah, I think, myself, I think we should be doing this bridge. No matter where it goes, it's in the MD, it's a bridge that needs to be done. We should be doing it. If you guys want to re-tender it to get a better price, that's one thing, but this bridge should be done. Yes, counsel.
I disagree with, who was it, Counselor Crick or Counselor Scarson? That tendering in, in the end of August is like, you're gonna get higher prices than you normally would if you tender in December, January, because these guys already have all their work.
Through the reef, that, that could be true. However, all of this bridge work is conducted in, in winter months. So, so they, they're not planning for summer work. It, it's all planning for winter work. So typically, when construction companies are, you know, slower, they can be doing these kind of jobs. So like I said, perhaps we would be getting better prices, perhaps not. I, I, I wish I had the crystal ball to, to forecast that, but.
What's your recommendation, and like, what is your gut feeling?
Just like it, just like it says, that council approved the unbudgeted 630,000 for this project.
And through the reef to council, we've seen that through a, a series of tenders in the last 60 days at the shop, we've seen prices go exponentially. I'll, I'll give you a quick example. We saw prices for the country lane countryside tender for the drainage work run anywhere from 700,000 to 2 million for the exact same job. We saw for the, for the radar tower road, the weather radar road that, that was tendered, we went everywhere from 400,000 to 1.7 million in tenders on, on that road. Prices are all over the map right now, and, and, and Mr. Bespalko is absolutely correct. Bridge work is typically done in the wintertime, which is why it's a later in the year tender. We could tender this out again in January, but the work wouldn't be done next summer. The work would, the work would either happen right away next winter, or it would be put off until the winter of 2023.
It's just what I'm scared is if we had a tender and it even goes higher, because everything I buy right now seems to have doubled. So, and, and I can't afford it, but this ain't double, this is a hair higher, but.
And, and if I may, Mr. Reeve, Manager Trelevan just informed me, reminded me, when we budgeted for this, it was likely budgeted as an open cut. Now, seeing the, the amount of fill over top of the, over top of the culvert and the amount of work done, the scope shifted to a directional drill, a bore, a tunnel project as opposed to an open cut, which is likely a cause for the increase in pricing as well.
So if you're gonna drill like that, how do you go, you go beside it? And, or how do you, how do you cut, how do you do these things? I guess that's.
That's a technical question. I can't answer, sorry.
So it'll be done in, like, December or January or something?
Through the reef, yes, correct. It'll be, it'll be winter work, correct, when, when conditions are frozen, correct.
Just looking for a motion, whatever way you guys want to go, that's just.
So would it not be cheaper still to dig from the top and put a culvert in that way?
Through the reef to Counselor Crick, it, it may not be because of the amount of overburden on top. Like, it's a really, really deep culvert. The amount that we would have to excavate in order to make the, make the slope safe, to do work in the bottom of the trench, that amount of dirt, just to move that amount of dirt would be a, a, a very, very large amount of money. It's a, it's a lot of dirt to move.
And then the closure of the road for how long?
Yeah, so.
So can we, can we reach out to Frog Lake and Fishing Lake, see if they want to help out with this project, since it's really servicing the residents?
Through the reef, I, I guess that's a, if, if council gives the direction to administration to try to partner with them, I, I, we could, I guess. I would suggest that that's a political decision.
Through, through the reef, that's council, I would absolutely agree with Mr. Bespalko that, that would be, if council wanted to have that communication, that would be required. I, I would suggest that council would be directing the reef to reach out to the chief and have that conversation. I'm pretty sure I know where that conversation is likely gonna go, it's an MD road, and.
It's our road. It has nothing to do, we're just asking for permission to work on, on land that's not ours to just, because if you're directional drilling, you gotta go into the quarter section on either side. So you, you can't just flop in one of those, you know, those drilling machines to go across a highway and just keep it in our, in our area, so it's impossible. Yes, Counselor Sawyer?
Does that close that road down then for a week, a day, a month?
Through the reef, I.
It shouldn't.
I'm getting the nod, or the, the head shake, no, that would not close the road. Okay, yeah, that road will remain open this, with this type of construction. Okay, so to your question, Mr. Reeve, the, the new culvert will be tunneled in parallel to the old one, and the old one will just get routed in.
Okay. Well, so this, this culvert has no chance of falling in, like, like what Counselor Sutcher was saying. It's just too much overburden. The biggest problem with this culvert is if it would, it would just crush and stop, stop working, kind of thing.
Well, to answer that question, Mr. Reeve, I would suggest that a culvert that size takes a lot of water. If it is in that core of shape with water going through the holes, through the top or whatever, Italy road, Italy road that road, and we're gonna have messes like you see on TV where roads collapse.
Because the water has to go somewhere.
Absolutely, and.
And it burns along the top side and always goes.
And, and it'll just erode, it'll start eroding around the pipe. It won't take, it won't take long for that road to fall.
Well, we lost a road like that by Thirian, not by Thirian, by, by Roy Anderson, yeah.
Range Road 485, just south of Highway 55. We had to bring a, a bridge from.
Brand-new culvert, and it wasn't installed or whatever, and it blew the whole road pavement and all.
So that, that's, that's the answer.
I'll, I'll make motion number one, that we approve the unbudgeted expense and get the bridge fixed.
All right.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of 630,000 for the Bridge File 85074 Frog Lake Tributary Culvert Replacement Project to be funded from the Bridge Reserve Fund. Thank you. Any, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry.
I thought you said that was gonna be.
Thank you.
All things considered, it was pretty quick.
Nine point five point five.
I think, Mr. Reeve, I'll turn it over to Counselor Crick. It was his addition regarding 34th Street, otherwise known as Lover's Lane.
Yeah, Lover's Lane, the east, 34th Street on the east side of Bonneville here. They're Emerald Estates West, which is right beside there, there's a few houses in there. The, the road is, the south portion of that road is oiled, it comes in, but the north portion, going out to Highway 28, it's not oiled. And in this, when it gets dusty out, dry out and dusty, it just, the prevailing northwest wind carries that dust into the subdivision there and just coats the neighbors' houses and cars with dust. So what I'm, what I'm, would like to propose is that we put, it's a town road, but it's our residents that are getting dusted out. And I'd just like to propose that we put, approve for 400 meters of dust control, and starting where the oil part ends going, going to the north.
And Mr. Reeve, if I could just, I spoke to CEO Rogers several weeks ago regarding this. There had been some conversation about closing that road through an area structure plan they have for a, a multi-lot development that is planned for, for the, for that road at some point. The town is not interested at this time in closing the road. I did speak to Bill about looking after the road, and the town is also not interested in that either. So if the road's going to be dust controlled, we would, if council wants to move down this, we would obviously have to reach out to the town to get permission to work on a town road. I don't imagine that would be an issue. They're always happy to have us do that stuff, and so they don't have to spend the money. But we would need their permission, and then obviously we would enlist our own forces and do the work ourselves.
And if I may, that road, I had met about two weeks ago, I had met Counselor Crick and a resident out there. That road has its issues right now. It's not as simple as, you know, running a truck of MG-30 up it for some dust control. It's gonna need some ditching. It's kind of like, it's wore out to the point where it's like a trough right now. There's no gravel to speak of left on it. If you put MG-30 on it, it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be a slick mud, greasy mess. At minimum, it would need a hole, like it would need re-graveling at minimum. But that doesn't, that doesn't help with the drainage issues that are on that road where it's just gonna hold the water. It's a bigger, it's a bigger issue than just, than just some MG-30. And when we were there, I completely agree with Counselor Crick, like it is dusting out the residents, but it's gonna take a lot more than just, you know, a couple thousand dollars of MG-30 to correct this issue.
Mr. Reeve, why won't the town do anything? It's their road.
I think the easy question is, there's no pressure because it's not their residence. There's nobody on the west side of the road at all. The east side of the road is MD residence. I think there's zero pressure. They don't care about the road. One day maybe on the west side, there'll be the new housing development. And at that point, that road is in their air structure plan, potentially to be closed right through to Highway 28. But there is no, they're not interested at all. I've had the conversation myself. I know Mr. Bespalk has had the conversation. And the town is just simply not interested in spending any money on that road whatsoever. There's no pressure on town to do anything with that piece of road because they don't have, literally do not have a resident who lives on that road.
Well, just like before, Mike, when we cold mixed that old road, remember when we cold mixed that, probably about eight years ago? You don't remember that? All the residents from that, that's called Emerald, right? There was a whack of them there and they were just dusted out continuously, so they asked us to cold mix that road. So we asked the town of Bonneville if we could cold mix it, and we did. So we cold mixed from this, from the highway that goes to Beaver Down, all the way up to the intersection where everybody enters. So that was an MD project years ago. And they never, we funded that all ourselves. That's correct. Yeah, and there was, the residents all came here, and they had a bunch of them sitting here, and they asked. Because the town wouldn't do anything. Well, they don't have no residents there.
So could we put like a few loads of gravel down and MG-30 on it for the 400 meters after the cold mix ends? Just so they're not getting dusted out then, or?
What's the cost though?
Yeah, through the Reeve to Counselor Crick, I would suggest that even that would be in the neighborhood of probably $25,000 to $30,000, including grading, because there has to be some grading there. Otherwise, we're just creating a hole for water to be, there's gonna have to be some grading, some crowning of that road, and then re-graveling it. It's, it would just ballpark off the top of my head, you're looking at, yeah, probably $25,000, $30,000 to do even that little section.
The residents in that area, they don't care. They would all be happy with that portion, that north portion that's gravelled just being closed completely. But it sounds like that's not really gonna, not really too much of a possibility, I guess, with Alberta transportation and stuff.
That's a town's decision, isn't it?
Yes, and Bill Rogers and I spoke about that at length regarding the possible closure. I said, I don't think there'd be any pushback from MD residents or the MD about closing that north portion from where the cold mix ends at the approach and north to Highway 28, which is probably, I'm gonna guess three-quarters of a kilometer-ish. What'd you say, Counselor Crick?
It's not that far.
About that? But the town is not interested in going through the process, and it's not our road, so we can't do anything about it. It would have to be the town closing that road, and they're just, they're just simply, the answer was no. So I know our numbers, just in terms of dust control, a 200-meter section has a cost of about $2,400 to $2,500 to go in with manpower. So if you do 400 meters, you're at $5,000 just for the dust control portion. And then if there's any other work that needs to be done to that road as well, because I agree with Mr. Bespalk that just going in and dust controlling it and creating what would be in a rainy condition, a slick in there will just hold that water, and that road will be, it'll be, it won't have dust. I will say that. It won't have any dust. But anybody else driving on it will be, will have other issues. So I guess we'll leave it to council to give us some direction as to what we should do there.
Well, it's really, I find it really frustrating that the town won't fix their road, really. We're spending almost $2 million on our bridge for a road to Fishing Lake, because it's our road. And they won't spend a few thousand dollars to fix, fix their road. So, but I don't know what you guys want to do. It's, you know, we put dust control down in front of the residences and on all of our MD roads so people don't get dusted out in their houses. There's a bunch of houses there. They're getting it. There's about seven, there's more than seven houses in there, but there's about seven that are probably getting the dust every time somebody drives by. And of course, on windy days, well, it travels a little bit further and gets to the farther houses as well. So...
What would it cost to cold mix that section?
Through the Reeve, we are looking at about $25,000 per 200-meter stretch. So you're looking at...
Fifty, sixty?
You're looking at almost 100 grand, because there's got to be some roadwork done too. You're looking at $100,000 even just to do that short 100-meter stretch, or sorry, 400-meter stretch.
Yeah, it's about 800 meters from the cold mix to the highway. But if we did the 400 meters, that would be enough to get the dust, so it's not coming into the neighbors' houses there all the time.
So the question I have is, so if we put in the money, put in the gravel, MG, how much would it cost us in the previous years to respread that MG-30 or like, if we had to top up the MG-30 again, like if we get the road to where we need it, what's that gonna look?
For a 400, for council, for a 400-meter stretch, you're probably looking at approximately $5,000 a year for maintenance on it. By the time you put a grader on there to blade it up, incorporate the product, and then lay it back out and pack it, you're looking at about approximately $5,000 for that 400-meter stretch. Because it's about $2,500 for a 200-meter stretch.
No, do you think you'd have to do that every year?
Again, Mr. Reeve, crystal ball.
So, Mr. Reeve, when is the town planning to do the air structure plan there or what?
That's, the air structure plan is currently in place. That's entirely now in the hands of the developer when the developer wants to develop that area. And I don't think there are any plans to do it anytime in the near future. There's just no pressure in town right now for new housing, so I can't see that happening. A little bit further to the Reeve's question, I think the other issue is going to be even if you MG-30'd it, and even if the dust control itself stayed put, the fact of the matter is, we'll probably end up having to go in every year to do touch-up, to get rid of the potholes, because the MG-30 will just pothole. So we'll be in every year. We'll essentially be taking over the maintenance of that road.
Thank you. I wasn't quite finished there, but that's okay. I was gonna say, it's almost the end of August, and maybe do the dust control next spring, like in May. Maybe more sense, I don't know.
And through the Reeve to Counselor Kreviak, that actually was a conversation that Mr. Bespalk and I had last week was 30 days. We are, I mean, I hate to say it, it's a beautiful day outside, but we are 30 to 45 days away from not having to worry about dust control for the rest, until spring next year.
You might have two months.
We are today, you know, the 24th, 24th of August today.
You'll have two months.
By October 24th, so 60 days, by October 24th, it's not likely the dust control is a big issue this year. So if council did want to do it, I think there is some wisdom to what Counselor Kreviak said in terms of maybe just wait till the spring and just work our way through it this year. Because that, any dust control we put on this year is going to be damaged by winter conditions. The road's gonna get plowed, so it would make more sense just to make it through this year and if council wanted to do it, and apply it in the springtime.
The only time I speak, Mr. Seal, is when I give wisdom, so thank you.
Okay, you have some wisdom, I hope, because it seems like Mike's the only one with wisdom here.
He likes to think that, yeah. So I just, I'm all for dust control for MD residents for sure. You know, kind of sets the precedent, so because I have a road that, Bonneville Beach, that is almost the exact same situation that we don't, we have been fighting to do maintenance on. We haven't without billing the Hamlet or whatever, the Summer Village of Bonneville Beach, right? So I mean, we started doing work on other people's roads. I hope we're making a bill and sending it their way as well, right? That's what we did at Bonneville Beach.
We did put a patch on there last year, didn't we?
Yeah, and build them for it. Right?
And isn't that their road, though?
Yeah, it is. It's the exact same situation, though, right? This is the town's road. That was Bonneville Beach's road. We did the work, but we sent them a bill. So we're gonna do work on this road without sending them a bill?
Yeah, but that's not, that's for our residents. That wasn't our residents.
Well, our residents drive on that road too.
Hundred residents that drive that every day, right? It was, we did it because of the MD residents that use it. I'm saying it's no different than this, and I have zero issue doing it, but there better be a bill at the end that we send to the town as well.
So through the Reeve to council, so Counselor Scarsen, who also speaks with wisdom, is absolutely correct. We did send a bill with an agreement with the, with the Summer Village of Bonneville Beach. I believe it was 13,000 or 17,000. I forget the exact number. It was in that vicinity. We don't have an agreement with the town right now to send them a bill. We're perfectly happy to do the work if council wants us to, and then directs us to forward them an invoice. My guess is without an agreement from the town of Bonneville, the invoice will probably just sit on somebody's desk. That does become a political issue at some point, but I'm, we're certainly, from our perspective, we're happy to track the work and create the invoice.
But we did have an agreement with Bonneville Beach to send them a thing. Right now, we don't with the town of Bonneville, and they're not gonna give us one. That's my point. Right? They're not gonna...
So then you're suggesting we just go ahead and do work on the town of Bonneville's road?
Hey, we didn't...
Then I'll make the next motion right out of that, that we did the same thing at Bonneville Beach.
We didn't do any, we didn't make any decision yet.
I'm just saying, right? That's where the conversation's leading to.
No, but it's, yeah, it's the same but different.
Exactly the same. You're doing work on a different municipality's road.
But the municipality that we're gonna ask, which is Bonneville, they're gonna say no. The Bonneville Beach, they said yes, to forward them the bill. But I'm sure the Bonneville aren't gonna say yes.
No, then, Mr. Reeve, we'll just cut off from some other ICF project, that's all. So Counselor, Counselor Crick, would you be okay with doing this in the spring, leaving a couple months off for this year?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as it gets done. It's...
I would like to see it being done over the winter, and then it's for no use, have to redo it in the spring anyway.
Well, I would just implore our, our men, our the Reeve or whoever, to talk to the town and say, listen, we'll be billing you for any work done. I don't know why we wouldn't at least say that, right? It's not like we haven't been doing it already.
And through the Reeve to council, if that's council's wish, I can certainly send a written email to the CAO indicating that we are planning, we need permission to work on the road, first thing, because it's their jurisdiction. And secondly, any work we do will be forwarding an invoice. If that's council's, I will certainly, we have all of the, we have all of the ability to track time and product and create a very detailed and exact invoice, so there's no problem there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr.
Counselor Kreviak, then Counselor Swiger, you got something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The town of Bonneville will forget all the IMCP money we were giving them over the years? Like, why can't they just support a few thousand dollars for this? I don't understand. Thank you.
Come on.
No, I was just curious, what does the town actually know about this? What kind of nice discussions have we had with the town? About the dust control, about the residents, or what do they know?
And through, counsel to Counselor Swiger, both Mr. Bespalk and I have had conversations at the different levels. I've spoke directly to CAO Rogers regarding the issue. I know Mr. Bespalk has spoken directly to Brad, their Director of Public Works. So we've had multiple conversations, and I've been told by the CAO know that we're just not interested in doing it.
Did they take it to council, though?
I don't know if they took it to council. I don't know if they had that conversation.
I'll see Elisa tomorrow. I'll talk with her.
Just ask, all you need to do is ask her what address to send the invoice to.
That's right. Some more wisdom. All right, what's the motion here? Can we table it? Table it till the next meeting?
I would suggest that it be postponed until the next council meeting, which will give the Reeve an opportunity to speak to the mayor.
I'll move to table it till the next council meeting then.
All right, thank you. You need to call for the vote? Just a minute. I can do it by hand. Don't blame it on God. It's two minutes till Darcy walks, so...
You got two minutes left, so...
I'm going quite fast. It's Bespalk.
It's been unplugged.
Which Bespalk are they gonna ask?
All things considered, I probably said the least amount of words up here.
Yeah, you've done well. You've done well.
I seen that look there. That was not a good look. Okay, we have a motion moved by Counselor Crick on behalf of council that council tables a discussion on dust control for 34th Street North Secondary Highway, sorry, Highway 659 within the town of Bonneville to the next regular meeting of council for further information. I think we had a lot of discussion on that. I'm gonna call that for the vote. That'll be carried. He said he did it.
It still says submitting. You can say you're waiting on Counselor Scarsen's computer, because ain't me. I was poor.
Just hit it with a hammer. There we go, carried.
It's still submitting, by the way.
All right, on to 9.6.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. Very quickly, 9.6. On May 11th, 2022, council presented with correspondence on the 2022 Alberta-Japan Twin Municipalities Association Conference. Administration was directed to bring back additional information regarding this association to a future meeting. I don't want to get too deep into this, but you can certainly see the information that was provided. There was some history regarding the Alberta-Japan Twin Municipalities. You can see who's hosted the conference in the past, and Appendix B has got the objectives of the association. So I leave that for council. Our recommended action is that council accepts the update as information.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes, Counselor Crick? Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, on making a motion that council accepts the update of the Alberta-Japan Twin Municipalities Association as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, carried, on to nine six two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, at the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Home Meeting, the committee requested administration research the average remuneration for municipal councils throughout the province and bring the information back to council. Administration looked into the council remuneration for multiple municipalities across the province, focusing on rural municipalities that have a similar population size and rural municipalities with similar equalized assessment. For local comparison purposes, our neighboring municipalities were included in this search as well. Administration pulled information from rural municipalities focusing on comparable populations and EAVs as outlined in the table below. Attached in appendix A is a table focusing on our neighboring municipalities and the rural municipalities that share both a comparable population and equalized assessment value. It's also worth noting that the equalized assessment value for the MD of Bonneville is shown in appendix A as the MD's twenty twenty-one, uh, EAV, which is five point six billion, uh, and combined with the ID three forty-nine in, in middle of twenty twenty-one, it added another two point four billion, since it was amalgamated to the municipality later that year. So, uh, you can see, uh, um, on the appendix that is attached, uh, the, um, our council remuneration, uh, annual average for both the Reeve and councillor, and you can see the two-year average for Clearwater, Laduke, Yellowhead, MD of Greenview, Lacklabysh, County of St. Paul, City Cold Lake, Town of Bonneville, Town of St. Paul. Uh, I believe there are more than that, uh, but these are the ones that kind of highlighted, uh, um, the, uh, the similarities. Population unfortunately is not the greatest indicator, uh, because there are many very, um, populated MDs that don't have any equalized assessment, and equalized assessment on its own is not a really good indicator because of some very small municipalities that have a huge assessment, uh, uh, opportunity being, uh, you know, the one that jumps to mind. So this is kind of a, uh, this is kind of a mix, uh, in my mind, we're not that far from, uh, from, uh, uh, Laduke, we're not that far from Yellowhead. Greenview has a slightly larger, uh, equalized assessment, but our equalized assessment combined with three forty-nine now puts us in, uh, the number ten or number eleven spot in the province, across the board, rural and urban. So we're, we're fairly, we're fairly significant in terms of the, uh, you know, we're at about eight billion dollars, um, which is a fairly significant, uh, um, equalized assessment.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Reeve, we shouldn't be, should not be comparing like the town and the county and the town of St. Paul, like, that's urban and rural, that's two different things.
Correct, and we only threw a couple of those in there just in terms of some local comparators, uh, because you're absolutely right, we are not the same as the town of St. Paul, nor are we the same as the town of Bonneville. Um, I did find it interesting that the town of Bonneville, um, has a significantly higher, uh, uh, salary for the, the mayor than we pay the Reeve, although the councillors are significantly less. So I, I, I did find that interesting. Um, you'll see that, uh, if you compare us, and I think we're, I think we're a fairly good comparison to both Laduke and the Yellowhead County. We're within probably ten or fifteen percent either way of, uh, of the equalized assessments, and you can see that, uh, um, Laduke, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the mayor, um, uh, in Laduke makes ninety-four, and that's the county, uh, makes ninety-four thousand, and a councillor makes sixty-seven thousand, in Yellowhead County, eighty-five thousand to sixty-three thousand. So, um, compare that to our numbers, which are seventy-four and fifty-two. So, those are kind of the comparators that we came up with for council to, um, to, uh, think about, and, uh, if there's any other information, just, uh, we'd be happy to provide more.
So, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept as information.
Okay, thank you, uh, councillor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the municipal council remuneration review report as information, any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you. Nine point six three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, this is the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven council strategic plan. In November of twenty twenty-one, MD, council and senior administration attended a facilitated strategic planning session to formally define short-term and long-term municipal priorities. Following council's guidance, administration has drafted the twenty-two to twenty-seven council strategic plan. The MD's council strategic plan document intended to focus administration and council on the direction and goals for municipality as well set accountability for achieving success, so you can see attached for review is appendix A. Um, our recommended actions, the council adopts the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven council strategic plan as presented. Uh, this was what was presented at the workshop, uh, several months ago. As you can see, we've now, uh, we've now got a, a publishable copy of it, and, uh, um, I think it would be fantastic to be able to, uh, uh, put a period on this one and, uh, and have a strategic plan moving forward.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion, accept option one.
Okay, thank you, uh, councillor Sutcliffe, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven council strategic plan as presented. Any discussion on this? Yes, councillor Crick?
Yeah, I guess I think there's a couple changes maybe we could make, one being, um, it says in there that we'll not rest, uh, we will not rest on our position as a major player in the resource sector. Um, it's talking about, but instead we'll focus on recruiting and retaining other industry sectors to our MD. And I guess I'm thinking that it's, it's great to have, uh, something's going on over there.
There's some kind of chickens adging over here. I'm not too sure what's going on here, but.
I guess I.
We got it under control, go ahead, start again.
Yeah.
Because there's just too many birds chirping there.
Okay. At one point in here, it's talking about not, not, but trying to focus on diversifying the economy essentially is what it is, or, and, focusing on other industries. And just in, in kind of in giving it some thought over the last while here, I was thinking that we really should focus on developing our oil and, like, we're just kind of sitting on a gold mine here. And as, as a county, we're struggling for, we're struggling financially right now, and yet we're, all the, the me, all the while, we're sitting on top of a gold mine. To me, it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense that we're, we're, to put so much energy into focusing on, I guess, uh, o, other industries when there's, there is a few primary industries here, there's agriculture, there, there is some tourism in the area, and the big one now is our oil and our gas here. And, yeah, I think we should focus on that, and the other thing that I didn't, it's in, that I would like to see in, I guess, the strategic plan, and I know we've worked on it a bit, but is, is our roads. There's, there's stuff about recreation, different things, but it would be nice to see, like, I, I guess I appreciated the work of previous councils that they were paving and oiling roads in the MD. For myself, if I was to move to, to a different, I don't plan on moving anywhere, but if I was to move, looking for the, the least amount of gravel possible that I have to drive on, it, that's a big deal to me. It's, it chews up your vehicles, it makes them dirty, they're dirty all the time. But in the MD, there's, a lot of the people in the MD already have oiled or paved roads to their residences, which is goo, is good. Um, so, yeah, I'd like to see those two things, I guess.
So, Mr. Reeve, members of council, just a couple of, uh, um, points of clarification. The, the text that's in here now is what was approved by council at the workshop, so if council would like to change its council's strategic plan, absolutely, but, um, I, I'm not sure it, what that looks like. Second, uh, to the roads, I'm not quite sure, councillor Crick, um, if you're talking about paving more roads, um, point me, please, to the tree that has the money. Because we could put it in a strategic plan, but if we're going to judge our performance on the strategic plan saying we'd like to have a bunch, a whole bunch of paved roads, but if we have no money in the budgets for the next five years to pave roads, I, then, that, that to me is we've created, uh, we've created a, um, a document that has no basis in reality. Uh, the second issue that you mentioned in terms of economic development, um, diversifying the economy is not something that's going to happen in the next five years. Um, but I think fifty years from now, we need to put ourselves on a path that fifty years from now, we won't be, we'll have taken the steps to slowly start thinking about those other industries that may become important. Because if we are going to focus entirely on oil and natural gas thirty years from now, um, we'll find ourselves with no money to gravel roads, let alone no money to pave roads. So I, I, I think the diversification, and I would argue as your CAO, the diversification of our economy is absolutely critical. Uh, is it going to be required next year, the year after, the year after that? No, I don't think so, and yes, we still have significant oil and natural gas resources. But to say we're not interested in diversifying when we know that the future is moving away from fossil fuels, I think that's a, uh, I, I, I think, uh, I don't think that's a wise course of action, that would be, um, I, I think we have to talk about what it looks like, where we need to be in twenty-five or thirty years, I don't think it means we have to be there tomorrow. Um, but, uh, but if we don't talk about diversifying, we won't look for those opportunities until suddenly it's needed, and then it'll be too late. But I, that's kind, but again, I'll say, this is council's strategic plan, that's my advice. You guys, if, if council would like to change this document, um, feel free, that is, it's your strategic plan.
Yeah, I got it, that's the first thing that popped in my head, too, is when, I mean, diversifying is not a overnight thing, it's something that we have to change cultures in, which takes years and years and years to do, so I think you have to start somewhere, and, and, uh, the CAO's right, it's, the gas and oil is, is good now, but it, it won't be here forever, and we gotta, councils ahead of us will be thanking us for, you know, looking at different plans now, because it does take a long time, it's not something that's going to happen. We'll have to depend on oil and gas for many years, but it won't always be there either, so.
Yes, councillor Swigger?
Yeah, I just, I'll just mention hydrogen again, because I'm, I, I've been on that sort of bandwagon, but, you know, they're using gas and oil to produce hydrogen, so we still have all the resources here to do that. We're just kind of not there yet in this area, apparently, they're producing lots of hydrogen now in Edmonton on the refineries, but I don't know, anybody here is kind of working toward that.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you. Uh, ten corresponds to information.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, so the cor, council correspondence, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I will point out a couple of highlights. Uh, A, number four, the letter from the town of Bonneville, the request cost sharing for police funding for annexed land. Um, uh, number twenty-two, the email from Lamont County for the annual Reeves Charity Golf Tournament. Um, I will point out the email from the Minister of Justice, the new website on the future of provincial policing. Um, uh, the, uh, number twenty-eight, the letter from BFRA, the invitation to the grand opening of the new Ardmore Fire Hall, which I believe is Saturday. And, uh, a email for the Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce, invitation to the grand opening and new shop local program. And I guess that would be, those would be the highlights, uh, in the council correspondence.
Any questions? Yes, councillor Crick?
So, ten point three, the letter from the Minister of, uh,
Environment?
Environment and Climate Change Canada, I believe. Nominating part of the North Saskatchewan River to be a, like a heritage river. Is that going to potentially have a negative effect on us developing industry, like, say, pipelines or anything else? And I'm wondering if this is something that we should, uh, write a letter back saying that we don't approve, don't support that.
There's, if we put a pipe, if a pipeline's built under the river, we all know it's, it's, uh, the safest way to transport oil or hydrogen or gas or whatever, safer than any truck out there. But if, if there's something like this here, it's just one more step in the road that's going to be harmful to our area, developing industry, then I would say we should oppose it.
So, uh, to council, um, through the Reeve, to council, the, uh, uh, I don't know, uh, you certainly could write a letter, uh, uh, opposing, uh, that change. I think, though, the, uh, the, the big kicker to any pipeline construction was the federal bill that got passed several years ago. I think that bill itself has probably done more damage to the ability to put a pipeline in the ground, and I think that will only be resolved um, either with the change in our local, um, and I, uh, and our provincial politics in terms of who's leading, uh, who wins the leadership review that, or the leadership race, I think that will maybe change some of that. Um, but from a federal perspective, I think the real damage was done with, uh, with the other bill. Uh, I think that was the one that, that hurt us the worst. I think this will be kind of a little side skirmish in terms of when they decide they want to rename rivers as heritage rivers, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, there is a reason for that, and of course, when it comes from an, an environment and climate change, when that's the title of the ministry, that should, that, that should pretty much tell you the, um, the behind-the-scenes agenda of the letter. We certainly could write a letter to oppose it, I, 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 I wouldn't do any harm. Um, uh, we certainly, I'll put something together for the Reeve signature and send a draft to council, absolutely.
Mr. Reeve, I'm not sure if you want to oppose it without really good, valid reasons, though.
So I, I was just informed, and I had, um, I, I, do you remember when? So at some point last year, the previous council sent a letter supporting this activity.
You weren't here that day, Josh?
Guess not.
So, uh, so, um, uh, Miss Severn has just, Miss Severn has just reminded me.
Ourselves or the?
No, the previous council, pri, prior to the election, the previous council sent a letter supporting this change. So I, it, so, um, yeah, so we've already sent a letter supporting it.
Uh, Mr. Reeve, ten, ten, ten point six, uh, it's just, it's a letter from LICA about the annual general meeting. And this council in past has always supported their a, annual general meetings, they've been locally, though. This one, they're going to try to do it in, uh, at Meatee Crossing and Smoky Lake. And so they're looking for input from anybody who would like to attend, not just council, but any, any LICA members, so there's a, on ten point six, there's a bit of a survey there, asking if you're willing to attend and if you want to take the bus or whatever, blah, 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 so. Maybe take a look at ten point six. That's your leisure, you don't have to look at it right now.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Just the encampment, just need a motion for information, or what do we need here? What's that?
I'll make a motion to re. I'll make the motion that we receive the correspondents' information.
Oh, boy, yeah, we won't be reading that one. Yeah, what's up there? Thank you councillor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council. From one to, what, twenty, twenty-some? No, up to thirty-four. Any, any other, any discussion, first of all? You don't?
No, I don't recall it, but maybe we did.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get, uh, um, uh, through the Reeve to council, we'll get, uh, um, Legislative Services to find the exact council meeting and the council motion and to try to pull up a copy of the letter.
Sure hope, uh, Darcy didn't make that, uh, motion.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so, uh, I'll just call this for the vote now.
Yeah, almost sure.
Almost sure.
Hundred percent not sure. Yes. Carried, thank you. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Reeve, if it's all right, I'll just do my council action report and head out, because I am nineteen minutes past my curfew, so.
Okay.
Uh, really, um, most of my meetings were canceled throughout the summer, but a couple of things were, uh, one, the, um, the, uh, Leah at the library, the manager of the library resigned, so she, we're looking for a replacement there. Uh, she's there till the end of September, she did a really good job for the two years she was there, but, um, she's got other things going on, I guess, so. Um, and the other one was, uh, it wasn't there and it didn't, uh, it wasn't mentioned, but the, uh, chamber, I sit on the chamber board, of course, is, has a grand opening, um, in September, I think, for the, uh, their new, uh, downtown, they're all set up there and ready to go there, so, um, I think there's an invite there to go check it out, so. That's really about it.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll see you all in a month, six weeks, what are we doing here now?
When we see you again, it could be a song, too. Who wants to go next? You got a count, your report? You ready to go? Okay, councillor Swigger?
I'll start, so I just mentioned the LICA one already, so if you wouldn't mind looking at that annual general meeting, see if you want to attend it, it'd be appreciated. Uh, Riverhurst Hall, went to one of their, uh, meetings, and, and they're holding a family fun day in September on the tenth. Uh, they're going to contact the MD and maybe get it advertised, they had a thousand people out last year for their family fun day in September, so.
Who's that again?
Riverhurst Hall. I think they, yeah, so Sept- I think they, yeah, so September 10th and then September 17th, they're having a, a fall dance fundraiser for a playground fundraiser, so that was Riverhurst. Lara Field, Field Day Tour on the 21st of July, so it's always good to get out to Lara and see, see their crops and that sort of thing. Donnie was there with me, were you there, Donnie? Glendon Parade, Mike and I were, helped out with the parade through candy, right, Mike?
I'll get to that.
Yeah, you, the Ag Tour, I went over really well, our Ag Service Department always does a great job with the Ag Tour, so everybody really loves that every two years. No, no different this year. Water Waste Reduction Committee, and Brad Olin went over just about everything I would want to talk about here. The only thing that he didn't mention, I just mentioned briefly, is that Waste Reduction Committee, we've, we've had in our mind for a few years now to try to build a waste energy facility somewhere in the MD, maybe at the MD or at the Ardmore landfill, but right now, Brad's kind of proposing, we'll put something in the budget to get this pilot project off the ground, so waste energy. And that might be in this year's budget to sort of get her going. I won't say anymore about it right now. Oh, the other one was the Russet Cold Lake Regional Utility Service Commission, so I sit on that one. You guys sit on, I think the Reeve and Josh sit on the Bonneville Utility Service Commission. So just an update, they're, they're still working toward their moving bed bioreactor, so their new water treatment or sewage treatment facility down by the Beaver River. We're going to do, AECOM's going to present to us in September, and they sort of hope to get started next year with this project. Yeah, and then there was some, a little bit of discussion about, that commission wrote a letter to the Bonneville Commission in support of the water pipeline that's running from Cold Lake to Frog Lake. That was it, thanks.
Thank you. My turn. Had a BRFA meeting. We reached an agreement with the AHS with regards to the EMS negotiations, but I can't give you the details now because it's not official yet. We had two days of strategic planning, the Lichten Lodge and Housing, it was as exciting as this council meeting, it was very good. Went for the Glendon Pancake Breakfast and Parade. One thing is, I ran out of candy, and there was no bubble gum, so very disappointing. But it was okay, I guess, ran out of candy very quickly. The Lichten Lodge and Housing had a meeting. The average cost of groceries per month was $22,000, and now, this year, jumped to $38,000 every month, so that's 73% increase in the cost of groceries. So it's going to, we're going to be in a deficit budget this year. The other issue is that there's 26 empty rooms in Bonneville, in the Bonney Lodge, and 15 in Cold Lake, so that's a substantial loss of, of income for us. I guess because of COVID and then seniors can't sell their homes this time as well. And the Glendon Manor has 11 empty rooms out of 18, so that's not very good either. And then the Ag Beautification Summer Tour, many accolades, excellent tour, thanks for all the guys who organized this. Daryl Knapp won the Rural Acreage winner, and the Micho Farmstead, Dennis Micho, won the Rural Farm Award winner, was the Rural Farm Award winner. Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
I attended the Family Farm Days at Willoughby Prairie Hall there on August 7th, had a good turnout, lots of families and kids there, so it was a beautiful day, and nice work on completing the grounds there to all the MD staff that worked on it, good job. As well, we, we had the lodge meeting and how, just all the same thing as Mike mentioned, but as well, we rolled into Royal, Rolling Brigade Bike Tour here two Saturdays ago, and it was a great tour, met a lot of great people from the East Coast, that was to bring public stress disorder awareness, and post-traumatic stress disorder awareness that was, and met a lot of people from BC, from up north and everywhere, raised a lot of money, and also thanked the MD for donating things for the silent auction, it was very helpful. And that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a BRFA meeting and went on the bus, sorry, I had a BRFA meeting on the 21st of July, went, and then we had the bus, like, the Lara, oh, no, sorry, the Ag Service Board Bus Tour. Also had a Lara Fort Kent Field Tour. And, just a minute, sorry, guys. I met with seniors in, at the Fort Kent Seniors Hall, and that, I guess the hall that is kind of in limbo at the moment. Yeah, that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you.
I guess everything's pretty well been reported, what I did as well. I'd just like to say, Mike kicked my butt on the pancake making, he, oh, yeah, like two to one, almost. I tried, but I failed. And then on the bike tour thing there, there, we were going, and I was, I was actually scared to go so fast, and a lady came up beside me from somewhere down east, and she's screaming at me to pick it up to go to 110, and I go, well, I don't want to go to 110, and then she apologized to me after, she didn't realize that was the first time I ever was in a, on a bike tour, so, yeah, that was pretty intense for me. But it was pretty cool to meet all these people from across Canada that are coming, and then all the local people that joined forces from all over the province, I guess. Yeah, the Legion. It was, it was a really good turnout, it was really, even though I was scared a bit, I did it, and we made it, and thanks to a neighbor that borrowed me a bike as well.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for your reports. Where are we at now? We need to.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
Before we go close session, just a couple of quick things.
Sorry.
So staff just forwarded me, the motion was made January the 13th of 2021 to support the Heritage River. Motion was made by Councillor Swaggart, and a letter was signed by Reeve Sawchuk and mailed on January the 21st of 2021. Okay. Second of that, I just wanted to say personally thank you to the Reeve. My wife and I celebrated on Monday our 40th anniversary in the Reeve. Kalinski was kind enough to send some nice flowers to my wife, and I'm very appreciative of that, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your reports again, and I need a motion to go into camera. Thank you. All those, do I need, call further? Yep, yep. And we're out. As soon as this is over. Now, we need a motion right now?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, the motion would be that council approves removing the Lakeland Industry and Community Association from the MD 2021-2022 Boards and Committees list.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion? Okay, Councillor Crick, lost my glasses, here they are. Moved by Councillor Crick, on behalf of council, that council approves removing Lakeland Industry and Community Association, Laika, from the MD 2021-2022 Boards and Committees list. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. By hand, or? Okay, we're good, yep, we're good to go. She's quick. You, you got a hand? He put his hand up, he doesn't, his thing's already. Mr. Swaggart and Mr. Kevak. Kate, Carrie unanimously. All right, is that adjourned? Who wants to make a motion to adjourn? Councillor Crick. Thank you, everybody, good job.